Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for February the 16th. All of us are present and accounted for. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is Item 1A, hear a presentation and provide direction on two low-income housing proposals, New Frontier Senior Living and Main Street and Horn Development, and a preliminary allocation of up to $500,000 of fiscal year 2017-18 home funds to the Mesa Art Space Lofts projects. I see we have Liz Morales with us. Liz, good to have you here. Thank you to your lovely assistant for joining you as well.
He's gonna help me with the PowerPoint and be my question-answer or should something come up, just in case, my Plan B here. So, good morning to all of you, and we are going to be... Let me make sure it's on. This morning, we'll be discussing the home funding and the low-income tax credits program. And we are going to be seeking direction related to these funding sources that we have. First of all, on the home investment program, the city of Mesa receives approximately a million from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The home funds are used to expand affordable housing and homeownership programs. It provides the critical gap financing for rental development. It supports and strengthens the public and private partnerships, and these federal funds are leveraged with private investments, which is...provides a greater economic impact to the city of Mesa. And we'll skip forward a couple slides. I'm sorry, I missed the first slide. Really was just the direction that we're seeking today, which is related to the letters of support that the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program requires from Arizona Department of Housing. Also, we'll be requesting preliminary approval of the $500,000 that we have set aside for rental development, and also direction related to the due diligence that we need to do for the allocation of that $500,000. So, moving ahead, on the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, one more slide. The Low Income Housing Tax Credit was created in 1986 by the IRS. Arizona Department of Housing administers the Low Income Housing Tax Credit for the state of Arizona. It is a competitive process in which developers apply for tax credits, and it provides the private equity needed to support the construction of the project. These projects typically serve families at between 40% to 60% of area median income, so the equity investment really are necessary in order to make these projects feasible. Part of the competitive process, the Arizona Department of Housing will ask respective jurisdictions, like Mesa, if the projects in their areas are supported by the city. This request is not dependent on whether they receive funding or not from the city. The timeline demonstrates the various steps that we've taken in the home funding process, from when we opened it up in September to now where we're sitting in front of you requesting your direction on the funding. The decisions that we make on the Lytec projects are important because there is a March 1st deadline, and so we want to make sure that our timeline provides the ample time both for staff and city council to make determinations on award decisions. Our open application process sought proposals for home funding. We received two proposals from New Frontier Senior Living and Main Street and Horn redevelopment. These proposals were reviewed and evaluated by staff and the Housing and Community Development Advisory Board. A third project, Mesa Art Space, went through the 1617 competition last year. They applied for both home, and they submitted to Lytec, and they were successfully awarded. The process for awarding home funds means that the project will go through a significant underwriting review by our staff. Throughout the underwriting process, which takes many months, the city evaluates the funding needed for the project. Should the project demonstrate a greater gap need, the city can increase the funding to ensure the project is viable. Mesa Art Space Lofts, which I will discuss in more details, in need of additional home funds. So I want to go through the next two, the projects that have been submitted. The first one is a New Frontier. As you can see here, the developer is, yes, Housing Incorporated. They are seeking to develop at the address of 2220 West Alice Street. They would provide 60 independent senior housing units. It will have a community garden and community space. It would serve those who are between 40% to 60% of the average median income. As you can see, the rents would be $575 for a one-bedroom and up to $895 for a two-bedroom. They did request the full $500,000, and they were scored by the Housing Advisory Board. The Main Street and Horn Development, the developer is Gorman &amp; Company. The site address is 815 to 827 East Main Street. Currently, there was a...the location was a former market, supermarket. It would hold 64 units, households of 40% to 60% of average median income, and their rents would range from $650 up to $1,050 for three-bedroom units. Again, also requested $500,000 home funds, and they scored...were scored by the Housing Advisory Board. The one thing that is not on the slide but is worth mentioning is they did provide a veteran preference as part of their application. Mesa Art Space Lofts, as many of you will remember, in 2016 received $500,000 from our 1617 home funds and also received the low-income tax credits. They would...they're going to provide 50 live and work units for artists and veteran artists and their families at 155 South Hibbert, also serving between 40% to 60% of average median income. The council approved the development and real estate purchase agreements, amendments, to ensure that the development occurs if new home grants are funded. And as...it's important to mention, the city has already invested a lot of time, just about $14,000 in various costs, and as well as Mesa Art Space has provided significant costs related to pre-development. I also want to mention that we, meaning the Housing Community Development Division of Community Services, has a spending need. So it's important for us to be able to spend the federal dollars. If we don't do that within 24 months of receiving that allocation, those funds can be returned to the U.S. Treasury. So it's critical for us to ensure that we're spending these funds and that the funds are expended on projects that follow through. So by funding Art Space last year, should the project not go through, we'll have a very short timeline to reallocate those funds. So today, staff recommendation is to allocate the 16...I mean, 1718 funding to Art Space. We're also asking council if you would approve or not approve the two proposals that are going in for the low-income tax credit competition this year. And finally, just the approval for Art Space really is preliminary. There's additional work that we are doing, due diligence, and so we would be coming back to you at the end of March to get that final approval for the $500,000 of the home funds.
Thank you very much, Liz. Council, we have several requests to speak, and so...but maybe before we get to that, are there any questions for Liz regarding any of the information that she just shared with us? Yes, Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, Liz, so we only have $500,000 to allocate, and so the idea is that $500,000 would be allocated to Art Space. And I know that we've had requests from the senior project as well as the Main Street project. So what we would do is, council, is write a letter in support. How much will that weigh in terms of when they submit their application to housing? Is that going to affect their rating?
So the competitive...Mayor and Vice Mayor, Luna, the competition and what they're submitting is really point-based. The letter of support doesn't come...it doesn't go with the application. It'll come from Arizona Department of Housing after they're doing their initial review of the project to ask if that jurisdiction is supportive of that project. So it does not weigh...our letter of support does not have any points to it. It's just a requirement of the state and IRS regulations to ensure that they get that approval from that jurisdiction.
Okay. Well, then, to clarify, if they don't get a letter from us, does that kill their project?
Mayor, not necessarily. It does not necessarily kill it. It does cause them to pause and ask why, and so...but that doesn't necessarily mean it will not move forward.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Freeman.
I have several questions, but I think I'm gonna hold some of them till after the public comments. But you brought up the median income. What's the median income, where kind of the threshold there for the areas?
So it varies by family size. For a family of four, it's $51,200, which is about $24 an hour for someone, you know, an average worker.
Okay, yes, Mr. Winkle.
Is that the median income for, you mean Mesa-wide, or is that just in this area?
That's AmeriCopa County. That's what is set by the state and also the federal levels. So that four persons at low income, which is 80%, is $51,200. For an individual, one-person household, it's $35,850.
Do you have any idea what the median income is, like by this project, by Ella, by the new Horn and Main Street redevelopment?
Mayor, Councilmember Winkle, for a city of Mesa-wide, it's 40...about $41,000. For that particular area, I could not tell you.
I have another question, too. So we've been engaging with New Frontier Senior Living and also the Main Street and Horn redevelopment now for a little while, and they've brought...I mean, they've been, I guess, pretty diligent in telling the council anyways what their plans are. How does seemingly overnight Art Space get allocated funds or possibly allocated funds?
Mayor, Councilmember Winkle, it really isn't overnight. It's a project we've been working since we...probably about three years now. And since we funded them, we've been working with them on their funding. One of the things that happened is that one of the investor that would have provided that equity investment did fall out related...and it's not because of Art Space, it's related to the entire country on...related to some changes in forecasting related to tax reform. So because of that, they've had to go out and get a new investor, which affected the amount of investment that was going to go into the project. As a result, the gap that was needed to make the project viable grew, and that's...and as we were reviewing the underwriting and they submitted that new information, we have found that they do require additional financing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Mr. Winkle.
Thank you, Mayor. Given that, Liz, is somebody here from Art Space that can speak to that?
Yes.
You know, certainly it's a concern. We want to make sure that it's a viable project. I totally support Art Space. I've been to Art Space in Harlem. I've been to Art Space in Seattle. It's a wonderful project. They do...not only do they provide housing for individuals that really need it, but they also very much involved in the community. In fact, if you go to the Harlem project, they have a number of residents that live there that engage with the community, and there's a number of performers that actually teach kids how to perform and do a number of great activities like that. So I've always been behind the Art Space project, but is there somebody from Art Space that can speak to ensure that, once we allocate this $500,000, that they're gonna be able to complete their project?
Yes. Why don't you come on up? Oh, no, don't do that. It'll be like...have you sit there.
Thank you, Councilmember Luna and Mayor Giles, and thank you all, city council members, for having us here today. My name is Heidi Zimmer. I'm the Senior Vice President of Real Estate Development for Art Space and project excited project manager for the last five years. I have with me Steve Stanley, who is our Vice President of Finance, and working with me to get this project closed in a timely manner. As Liz said, this was a very unexpected development that happened. We were fully funded, seemingly fully funded in December, and looking at closing pretty much right around now. But in December, with the speculation that corporate tax reform will occur, the investor market for tax credits, some investors pulled out altogether of the market, others decreased their pricing substantially. Our investor really just didn't want to move forward with the deal at this point. Thankfully, because of our longstanding relationships and 30-year track record, we were able to find a replacement investor at a very competitive price quickly, albeit not as competitive as it was in 2016. There was about a seven-cent difference in the pricing, which resulted in a gap of about $850,000. So we sharpened our pencils. Art Space looked at everything we could possibly do, including our deferred developer fee and additional risk and guarantees that we can take to ensure the project goes forward in a timely manner. We intend to close no later than the end of June, but our real targeted closing date is April 27th. And time is of the essence. Not only is it important that we expend the home funds and get under construction as soon as possible, our pricing with the investor also expires in June, and we have to meet what's called the 10% test for ADOH, meaning that if we don't expend 10% of the construction cost by the end of June, we are at risk for losing the tax credits altogether. So the pressure is on, and we certainly intend to see this through, to be under construction as soon as possible. It's a hard ask, and we really appreciate your consideration of that, and happy to answer any additional questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmer. Yes.
Good morning. I have a question. So are there any past projects that you've got...have done in other parts of the country that you've let the time lapse and you've actually lost the credits because you let them expire, because you didn't meet it within the timelines that we're referring to in this specific project?
No. No, and we have 45 projects in operation.
The second question that I have for you is, obviously, there's been multiple other organizations that have applied for our home credits that if we allocate the $500,000 to Art Space, we won't have any funds to allocate to their projects. Wondering what your comment is or how you justify that in regards to what we should be telling the other projects that you guys need the extra $500,000 again this year?
Sure. You know, it's a timing issue. We, two years ago, I believe, we applied for home funds, but we hadn't received an allocation of tax credits yet, and so I think we were in a similar position of the other two proposals you're talking about this morning. We had to wait for other projects to advance before it was our, you know, kind of turn in the pipeline here in the city to secure those funds. And so since we have the tax credit allocation in hand, I do believe...I can't remember the intricacies of the tax credit application. I know that letters of support are certainly helpful in getting those projects in your pipeline to the closing table in the following year. Hopefully, you're gonna have just as big of an allocation of home funds in the next fiscal year, and those deals, if they're provided support today, I believe, could advance to closing and construction in 2018. But unfortunately, we have a time deadline with this June kind of hard stop on getting this under construction that, due to these unfortunate circumstances in the market, there's just nothing we can...nothing else we can do about it.
And so the home funds will be lost if they're not spent within 24 months, I think, right? This is what you had indicated. What does that technically mean? Like, does that mean breaking ground? Like, what justifies that? What is that, 24 months?
So it's the contract. Once we close on the contract...the closing with our home contract, as long as we can demonstrate those funds are committed within those 24 months, we're fine with HUD. But until we can have...we can ensure that the project's viable, once we know the project will move forward, then we will do a contract. But up to now, because we know of the gap, we cannot do a contract until we have all the financing in place. So for HUD, the main requirement is a contract showing commitment.
And the estimated date for that is June?
April.
April?
End of April.
So if that contract isn't done by April, are we gonna get the $500,000 home funds from the previous year to be able to reallocate to other projects?
Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, absolutely. I'll be coming back to council with Plan B, what to do with the next $500,000, if should it not be spent from 1617, and then we'll also look at 1718.
And the timeframe is such that the other projects would still have time to use the funds from last year?
Councilmember Whitaker, it will not be in time for their March 1st application, which would give them the points for the local jurisdiction support.
Okay.
And I will add, they have indicated, at least one of the projects, that should we have funds and they are successful, they will come and ask us for funds, but that won't help with the point system related to the application.
Okay. And Heidi, I just have one last question. Have you guys ever applied...has this ever happened on any of the 45 projects, I think, you indicated? Have there...in any of those other 45 projects, have you guys been awarded home funds one year, and your financing has fallen out where you had to go back and apply for home funds or get additional home funds the second year? Or is this the first instance that that's ever happened in your organization?
I don't recall...I'm gonna defer to Steve on that.
Good morning. I'm Steve Stanley. I'm Vice President of Property Development. I also be fine after working cross over departments at Art Space. You know, these kind of catalytic events are rare. The crash in 2008 was where you would see those things. Pricing went from a dollar to 70 cents. And that was the 1603 funds that the government started producing and all sorts of different monies to make deals happen that had grown. Since then, the pricing has been elevated until now. And this is the first time since the crash back in '08 that pricing has stumbled backwards, and there are a lot of projects frozen. We understand there are still 10 projects with awards from last year that haven't closed at ADOH. In that meeting with them where we've tried to get more credits upon the gap, and they were unwilling to do so, you know, they were still of the belief that that will happen, but if those pricing hits happen to those other 10 developers, they're gonna be next in line. We're proactive. We're ready to go. As we've met with some of the council members, I have the due diligence closing list now in Miami. April 27th is the date we set because that's the last Thursday of April, and you all don't have a Friday workday. And I'll start submitting Monday pending approval of this award. So this is a definite go. It's not a maiden. And I will want to tell all of you if you need to get updated or stay up to speed on the project.
Yeah, so have you guys ever applied for home funds in one year, gotten approved, and then some of your financing has fallen out where you had to go back and get additional home funds in any of your other additional 45 projects in the past?
We have.
In '08, we did the 1603 that I was talking about. It was a new program enacted simply to fund gaps that were created. We did get some of those funds for projects. Not necessarily home, but if home had been the vehicle, we would have gone. But since then, we haven't had any declining prices, and there's been no people back.
We have had a couple of projects that have home funds in multiple-year cycles, but it wasn't due to the same issue that we're talking about today. But we have had multiple-year allocation of home funds in other projects.
That weren't anticipated?
That were not anticipated. Some other source that was supposed to come through did not come through, and the city...this was actually recently in the city of Memphis, Tennessee, did not have a project that needed those funds, and so they were able to make...it was a very small allocation of additional resources to our project because it was shovel-ready. So...and then that project...the other project came back the following year.
And I would add, if I can, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, is that because the underwriting process is a long-term process, so sometimes we will find that the project doesn't need as much money, so we can as easily increase as decrease the amount of home funds. It's really about identifying what that gap is needed based on the investment, based on other fund sources, and we can make those adjustments to our home funds as needed.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. If there's no other questions of these speakers, thank you very much. We're gonna now...I have, I think, eight blue card...I'm sorry, Liz.
And I just want to...I don't know that I mentioned, and I apologize, Mayor, the $500,000 is only about half of our allocation we get from HUD. So I just want to make clear that we do support a lot of other activities, including homeownership, rental...I mean, owner development of homes. We do tenant-based rental assistance for special populations. So we are doing other important activities with these funds. Rental development is just one aspect of what we use home funds.
Okay. One last question. Thank you, Mr. Winkle.
One last question. Is it possibility also to use CDBG as maybe an allocation for some of these projects?
Mayor, Councilmember Winkle, it depends what type of activity it is. So CDBG can only be used when related to construction as acquisition. So it can't be used for construction but acquisition of the property. So we have used CDBG funds for past rental development in conjunction with home, but for this particular need, it's related to construction, not acquisition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have, I think, eight cards, so if you don't mind, I'm gonna be fairly strict in enforcing the three-minute rules, so I don't mean to be rude, but I apologize in advance. If you're a speaker and you're up here and it's three minutes, I'm gonna invite you to have a seat, okay, so we can get through. And to the extent you feel like somebody who came before you has said something that you want to say amen to, there's no penalty for taking less than three minutes, is what I'm saying. So first person we invite up is Tyler Montague. Please state your name and your address, and we'll look forward to hearing from you for three minutes, Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Tyler Montague. I live at 534 North Orange Street. I oppose the Main and Horn Development and the Frontier Senior Living Development. Not in and of themselves, I oppose the location, and I support the Art Space development. I think the character and nature of it would add to the city and is something that we should support, and that the other projects don't support the city's general vision of a healthy neighborhood with integration of various levels of socioeconomic occupants. I think it amounts to concentrating poverty in one area, which is harmful to the residents and harmful to the business ecosystem in the area. I think, as I looked at the most recent statistics, this area has the lowest median income in the city and actually in the...among the lowest in the entire valley. And so these projects may be appropriate in another part of the city, but in this area, they would continue to decrease the median income. There's significant demand growing for the type of renewal that the area needs with the Sycamore Project with higher rents, a significant ownership component. I'm aware of another project with Senator Warsley and a group of investors that is going to be built, that they're planning for Main with $2,000 a month rents. And so there's evidence that there's a growing demand for that type of renewal, and this type of project would, you know, concentrate families in crisis, which in turn creates problems for the schools, et cetera. So on that basis, I invite you to allocate all those funds to Art Space and not support, not even with a letter, the other projects. Thank you. Any questions?
Sure. Mr. Whitaker.
You indicated this area has the lowest median income in the entire state. Where did you pull those numbers from?
In the entire area. Yeah, it was a...no, I'm trying to recall my source. It was...you know, I'd be happy to email it to you later today.
Yeah, and I'd be curious what the actual median income is for the specific area that you're referencing, like geographically, how far did you go?
Yeah, it was near $40,000, if I recall, or $38,000, and it was significantly lower than...and I was looking at the 85201 zip code and a couple of zip codes surrounding it to the east and the west.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Next is Jacob Brown.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. If I may, I wanted to mostly talk a little bit about the history of this. From what I understand, the council has been informed on an individual basis that the community supports this project, and I apologize, I didn't give my address. I live at 712 East Third Avenue. That's about a quarter of a mile away. That's about a quarter of a mile away from where this project is being proposed. I work closely with the neighborhood and with the West Mesa CDC. And from what I understand, and when I say I work closely, we have monthly meetings, we're very involved, we're discussing what's going on in this neighborhood. This project would actually be in the area that we meet with monthly. And so the area that we meet with goes mostly from Hobson out to Stapley and from Main down to Broadway. So it's about three-quarters of a mile by a half a mile, and this project would be built in that area. From what I understand, each of you were told on meetings with the developer and with a representative from West Mesa CDC that the neighborhood was supportive of this project. And I want to make very clear that we do not. I have not met one person from the neighborhood that supports this project. I believe, at least Councilmember Glover, that he received numerous emails yesterday indicating that he did not. That occurred after I was told that all of you had been told by the developer that we did support it. And if I can explain briefly what happened there, we have had numerous people come and present to our community about different Lytech projects or different low-income projects that could be built in or around our neighborhood. And I will say that the Gorman project, this Main and Horn project, their presentation was far and away the best presentation that we received. It was very professional, they answered our questions very clearly, and we appreciated that. They had more information than any of the other proposals, and they listened to what we had to say. And so I think, and we all told them, "Thank you for coming, thank you for being so professional." I think that there was some confusion that that meant that we supported the project. However, then when I started hearing that you all were being told that the community supported, I started asking around, and I said, "Do you support this? I'm curious where they're getting this information from." And to a person, every single one of them said no. And so what I did is, we have a Facebook group, we have an email list, I didn't indicate which direction I was leaning on the project. All I did is I posted on there, I said, "The council has been told that you support this project. If you want to contact Councilmember Glover and let him know what you think, please go ahead and send him an email." And then, as I think all of you know, I sent individual emails to each one of you to let you know that I did not personally support it and that I did not believe that the area supports it. I know I don't have a lot of time, I did want to give you that information that we don't support it. I would be interested in knowing, again, any names. We have about 10 to 15 that meet regularly, monthly, and then we have several others that come some months and don't come some months to our meeting, in addition to talking outside of the group. I can definitely tell you that those 10 to 15 that come regularly, none of them are supportive of this project. The other ones that come sometimes and come and don't come others, I can't speak for each one of them, I haven't been able to get in touch with all of them in the 24 hours that I was informed that this meeting was about to occur, but I did not talk to one that supported it. And so...
Thank you, Jacob. Appreciate you being here. Next person is Dee Montague.
Morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Congratulations on your new position, see you in a different chair and others that are here. I likewise support the funding for art space. We've, on record from last year, supporting that project and think that it's worthy of making sure that it funds. I support what Jake said about opposition at Horn and Main, that doesn't create a balance. Tim Boyle has a chart, and I think most of you have received it, and he has copies this morning, that answer your question about income in the area and projects in the area. But my understanding is that the West Mesa area that we're talking about has 22% living below the poverty level per the census tracts, and Tim will pass that out too if he desires to. With regard to the Ella project, there was a community meeting, poorly attended in the library, four people were there, two spoke in favor of it, no, two were against it. One was in favor of it because, and this was his rationale, that if we get two good, nice of projects here, it'll raise our property values and my tax will go up. And I don't want that, so I'll, he was in favor of it. At the P&amp;Z meeting, there were seven people who came and spoke against it from the immediate neighborhood. A compelling argument was that it just doesn't fit. If you drive the neighborhood on May Street and First and First Place, Second Street and Third Street, and shrouding that, while that area may have been at one time zoned for multifamily, it hasn't developed that way. It's developed single-family homes, and we have La Maceta just to the south of this proposed project. This project of the, on 2220 West Ella, is up to 40 feet high and right up against the fence line of homes that are on May Street. Completely out of character, it's not a good project, it's not, it's not one that we would support. It's, although the people who have presented have been very nice and cordial in coming and meeting with us, but we've told them from the beginning that we oppose it because we need to raise the median income in our area, West Mesa, so we can stop the loss of grocery stores and banks and doctor's offices and hospitals. Those are all an impact of having a household income that's too low. And I've gone through with you before, side by side, the stores that we've lost, the businesses that we've lost, and as we've tried to get them back, they've said we need to have a higher household income. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dee. Jennifer Duff. Jennifer, do you wish to speak? And I saw you checked the box that you're in supportive art spaces, that, okay. Perfect, thank you very much. Mike Wright.
Good morning, I'm Mike Wright, I live at 629 West Caballero, and I'm here on behalf of the Action Neighborhood Alliance, which is a group of homeowners in the 85201 area, consisting of about 600 people. I echo what's been said so far by the Montagues and Mr. Brown. The problem that we have with low-income housing in West Mesa is that it's concentrated in West Mesa, contrary to law, contrary to good socioeconomic planning. We asked Mr. Boyle to prepare a chart that we'll hand out to you if we may, that shows the concentration of low-income in the area, which then, as Dee Montague said, impacts on the economic development of the area. And the impact on the economic development of the area robs the residents, low-income as well as non-low-income residents, of economic access, access to good businesses, to education and so forth. It impacts on crime, which impacts mostly on the low-income residents. So we feel that continuing to concentrate low-income properties in West Mesa is not economically viable, it's not socially viable. And so we have in the past, and we will continue, to oppose such projects in West Mesa. If I may, I'll hand out this chart. Previously, we sent to the city council and staff more information, more data concerning this problem that we see. And the new members of the council, I don't know if you have access to that or not, but I'll be happy to send that again. So if I may, hand this out.
Yep. Thank you, Mike. Are you, do you have more to say?
No.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. I also have a card from William Frost, and I'm not sure if you, do you wish to speak, Mr. Frost?
For a moment, if I might.
Please, you bet.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council, my name is William Frost, I live at 740 East Second Avenue, which is just around the corner from the proposed Main and Horn. And I wish to speak in opposition to that particular project. Much of what I would say has already been said, except I would just like to add that from noon yesterday to about 10 o'clock last night, I received several phone calls from those in my neighborhood. And whether they're here, I didn't look around to see, but all were in vehement opposition to this particular project. For the reasons that have been mentioned, the loss in our neighborhood of local businesses, drugstores, grocery stores and other kinds of businesses which residents in the neighborhood have relied on, particularly those who are limited in transportation and could walk to said businesses. And the likelihood of recovering that economic base in our neighborhood is very remote, due to the lack of household median income that already exists. Adding additional burden to that would be just a devastation to what is already in place. So I too speak in opposition of the Main and Horn. The other one, I do not know, and I would not speak concerning that. The art space, it sounds to me like it's a viable project, and so I would support that particular space. Thank you very much for your time. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. Mr. Wrinkle.
What cross streets are you living at, or what area?
I am just west of Second Avenue and Horn.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. Tim Boyle.
Hello, my name is Tim Boyle, I live at 450 North Emerson in Mesa. I have lived there my entire life, so my driver's license that I got when I was 18 is still valid because it still has my address on it. I bought the house from my mom. But I lived, I did live in New York for 10 years. I went to New York for school at Columbia University, so I fell a New Yorker with Mr. Frost. I know a lot about density, having lived there. I was there during the famous blackout that happened a while back. We were on the six-story walk-up and we had two kids in a stroller, and that was a grand adventure. Excuse me. As an architect and a developer, I have a minor in urban planning from Columbia and taught in the urban design school there for six years. I reviewed textbooks on the faculty there, and I have to say, the New Frontier's Living Project is a textbook example of what not to do in urban planning. Dropping a huge 40-foot-high gated community into the middle of a single-family home block is, against the objection of the neighbors, is ridiculous. Having a single information meeting during dinnertime four miles away, attended by only two residents of the neighborhood, is even more ridiculous. The project slid through the city's design process using this RM zoning, which I've started to call Phantom Zoning. It's an older zoning in older parts of Mesa that can be a single-family residence or a 40-foot-high gated apartment complex. Phantom zoning surrounds many of the schools in older parts of Mesa, and as I was studying it, I discovered my own house has this zoning. So I could turn my house in a single-family neighborhood into a 40-foot-high apartment complex. It might even be in your neighborhoods. You should check out where the RM zoning is because suddenly someone could turn your neighborhood into a giant apartment complex, which is what's happening on Ella. So this project has been sliding through the city. It skipped many of the checks and balances that we have to tell if it's a good project or not because of the zoning that it has. This is one of the few places where the city can oppose the project, and that's what I recommend you do. I recently toured the Metron Main project across from Evet. These are single-family residences owned, it's townhomes, they're planning to sell in the 2000s and up. That's what's starting to come into the area on its own through the market. That's what's going to help this area improve, and that's what's going to make the Light Rail Corridor the pride of Mesa. That, I believe, is part of the next Mesa vision. Ella Street is what we've done in the past for the last 40, 30 years. The Metron Main is what Mesa is going to become. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Boyle, thank you for your service on planning and zoning. Appreciate it. The last card I have is from Jamie Glasser. Jamie, do you wish to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Jamie Glasser, I live at 145 West Third Place in Mesa, on the corner of Robeson and Third Place. I'd like to first just briefly say that I graduated from Mesa Leadership last year, and Claudia Walters gave an amazing discussion for our ceremony, and she said, "It is very, very easy to say no. It is very difficult to step up and say, 'I don't like this, but here's another solution.'" And I've been very distressed about the whole idea of low-income housing has now been associated with a lot of soundbites and misinformation that it actually is increasing poverty in our city, that it's not true. And hopefully we'll have statistics soon to show that it helps, actually gives people jobs, help them live in downtown Mesa and actually spend their tax dollars, which is what supports our city. However, I'm here today to speak in supportive art space. I know that's a really big ask, and I know it's not a comfortable one to spend all the home dollars, but I think I'm founding the Mesa Art Studio, which will hopefully increase, it's a profit and nonprofit entities, to increase local arts economy by actually helping artists make money. And I just graduated from a four-month intensive social entrepreneurship program in Phoenix, and everyone asks me, "Why Mesa?" I think we know why Mesa, and we've actually been able to increase support for our downtown. I've brought a number of people here who have no idea why Mesa, and we're very impressed. So thank you all for all your work in making Mesa great. And I think art space is an amazing project. I've been to eight of them in the United States over the last four years, and they're, what they do for the people, ironically, around them is increase, in some ways, increase socioeconomic businesses, local businesses, and based in the arts, and the arts are the most efficient way to increase our local economy, which now with things that have happened, the federal dollars falling away is very, very important. So I would really strongly recommend allocating the home funds for art space. And the two things that shocked me is I found out from the smart database, new open data website from the city of Mesa, that's about 674,000 people came to downtown Mesa in fiscal year 2016 for arts and cultural events. And so I'm dedicating my life to connecting those people with local artists to actually become their patrons. So art space would be amazing to have 50 artists behind the Mesa Arts Center living and working there. And one of the ways they're chosen is by their community involvement. They have to be willing to open their apartments twice a month for people to come see their studios inside their apartments. And so that's one of the main reasons, the way they're chosen is not just a commitment to something creative in their life, but to be community-involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you for all you're doing in the arts community, we appreciate it. Any other requests to speak that I haven't seen so far? Okay, thank you very much. I'll kick off the discussion, if you don't mind, just a little bit. I have had the opportunity to meet with each of the developers for these three projects. And let me just preface this by saying, I, there's kind of an underlying current, and it may have already been said, that Lytech housing is something that is not good, or it's something that we ought to try to avoid. And I want to preface my remarks by saying, I believe that's absolutely not true. Lytech housing is a great thing, and there's been some great Lytech projects in our community, and I'm grateful for them, and I want to encourage them and to have more of them. But I also believe that we do, we need to be careful, we need to place them strategically, that we need to scrutinize them, we need to hold them to high standards. And so when I met with the developers for New Frontier, this is a senior living project that is age-restrictive, it's for older folks, so it doesn't impact schools, which is one of the arguments that sometimes is raised against Lytech. And so I said, you know, I might be a fan of this project, but it's important to me that you go out and meet with the community. And by the way, we're going to hold you to very high standards, similar to Encore, for example, in terms of the quality of your development. But if you come in and demonstrate that you've been sensitive in working with the neighborhood and that you're there to raise the neighborhood up and to listen to their concerns, and you're going to have high construction qualities, then I could see myself supporting this project. So I appreciate the fact that they engaged in that, but I just don't think that it measures up to what I would want to see to earn my support. So, thank you, but I'm regrettably not going to be supporting that project. With regard to the Main and Horn development, again, Gorman has a great track record with our community. I think they have a lot of credibility and goodwill with the city of Mesa. They've done an extraordinary job in the previous projects that they've had with us, and so they come in, you know, with the, my inclination is to be supportive of what they're doing. But when you're looking at where this project is, which is literally next door to the very large El Rancho project, it just, it's exactly the wrong place for another large Lytech project on Main Street next door to El Rancho. So, regrettably, I just can't find, I just can't support that project as well. But on the other hand, I am joined in being one of the very enthusiastic supporters of art space. I was first in, and I know this has been a five-year process, when art space first came to Mesa and started working on this, I've been involved in it for the last three years. And I know the city of Mesa organization has been very... has been very involved in nurturing and developing the success of Art Space. This will be multiple years of home funding that we've dedicated to Art Space, in addition to donating the real estate and other concessions that are being made to promote Art Space. So for the last several years, the city has been very actively involved in trying to make this project happen, and it's important that we continue it through. So I'm looking forward to, hopefully over the next couple of months, just nailing down Art Space and making it happen for sure. So I'm very enthusiastic and grateful to the folks from Art Space for coming to Mesa, Arizona. It's going to be a real catalyst for continued development of the arts in our community and enthusiastically support it. So that's where I'm going to come out on these projects. Thank you. Mr. Luna.
I just had a question. I wanted to know if Liz would be able to come back up real quick. Can you tell me how, if we decide not to support either New Frontier or Main Street, how would that affect them adversely from the state in terms of their submission to the project? They can go ahead and proceed with their projects. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Luna, yes, they can move forward with or without our support. Again, the letter does cause pause to the state, should we not indicate that we support the project. Whether or not they would move forward is really up to Arizona Department of Housing.
But they're certainly free to apply next year as well.
Absolutely, yes.
Well, on the target households, 40% to 60% of the average median income, you had indicated that that might be the greater Maricopa, what is the geographical area of that?
So that is for Maricopa County, and I think it's important, the reason they target that particular target is that they do have income, and it just allows them to have affordable housing, whereas we typically look at 30% to 40% is what the burden of housing should be on a family. So that, by targeting that group of families and individuals in that income group, it allows this housing to be affordable in order for them to have more disposable income. So it's not the very low income, which often is what affects our area median income, it's the one, it's between 40% to 60%.
What is the actual median income that that's being based off of?
So it, and I have the numbers here. Again, if you just look at, it's based on size of households. So a size of four members, it's 51,200. For one individual, one person, it's 34,000. So it ranges based on household numbers. But again, if you look at just Mesa, I think we stated these numbers, it's around 48. So the, these projects do serve around the area median income, again, 40% to 60%. So if you hit 50%, we're hitting where we're currently at.
I'm sorry, so what is the median income of Maricopa County?
Maricopa County? I don't have, I have the numbers for, I'm sorry, oh, here it is. So this is Maricopa County. So it is for low income, which is the 80%, it's 51,200. It's for a family of six, it's 59,400. For a family of two, it's 41,000. So is that what you're looking for?
Actually, I'm just curious what the median income is for, that this is being based off of?
Yeah. I don't have the Maricopa County-wide median income.
Okay. But it is based off Maricopa County's median income?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Luna.
Just real quick, now, in terms of our senior citizens, the senior project takes that in consideration. So what is the threshold there?
So I may defer, I'm not sure if they're in the room, but again, I think in the presentation, we indicated that they are serving the 40% to 60% on the seniors, which would be for individual between 22,000 to 35,000 if it's a one-person household, and 25,000 to 41,000. So that's the income range for one-to-two-person households, which is typically what they, the household size they would be serving. And I believe that if you saw what their income range is, it really does reflect those numbers.
Thank you. Mr. Winkle, and then Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Frost and Mr. Brown, I'm glad that you're here today, because I think you are some of the first times that someone from the actual neighborhood that this is happening has showed up and talked to us about this. Usually, there's a larger group that has a larger concern for the area, but since you're here, I'm glad. The people who told us that you supported this was Cynthia Dunham from West Mason CDC, so I find this to be a little conflicting. Secondly, on this issue of affordable housing, the idea being, when you put an affordable housing complex somewhere, are you putting more poverty in an area, or are you helping the people in that area get out of that poverty? And that seems to be what we're talking about here, right, as far as everyone's concerned? And the idea of the correlation between school, school performance and poverty generally is because someone doesn't have a consistent place to live and they're hungry, right? Can we all agree on this, or is that not true? Yes, no, Tyler, Mr. Montague, that's not agreeable?
The test scores, we looked at the test scores of every elementary school in reading and math, and where the multifamily increases the test scores.
Dee, I'm afraid no one outside of this room can hear you, so if you're, Mr. Winkle, if you have some questions for him, you would like to invite him to the microphone.
Yeah, please, please approach.
The correlation we developed is between the percentage of students in an elementary school that qualify for the federal free and reduced lunch and the test scores, and there's a, in the data that we pulled, there was close to 0.75 positive correlation. There's a very strong relationship. As you're speaking to cause, we didn't analyze that. So it could be culture in the family, tradition of education, various forms of distress, for example, drug use, or single-parent family that don't have time to help with homework, various causes. So I wouldn't agree, but you may not be wrong. I'm just saying that we haven't developed that, or that would only be a partial reason. And I would point out that new housing doesn't mean the old housing goes away. So, you know, if you're talking about replacing dilapidated housing with a nice project, that does bring people up, but by definition, if you just build an additional one, you simply import people.
Right, so that becomes jargiment of, are we putting more people in poverty, or are we helping people get out of poverty, right, with these projects?
Right, you'd be concentrating people in poverty in the area. So it'd be nice for people living in poor housing to have a nicer housing, but unless you're wrecking down the old housing, you're just simply adding more. And it's mathematically impossible to raise a median income by adding more people below that income level.
So one more comment, and then can I make a motion?
Of course.
One more comment that I have is, I walked all of Ella just a few days ago, knocked on the doors. I walked Dana and First Avenue just last night when I got an email from Mr. Brown, knocked on all the doors. Majority of people on the south side actually spoke Spanish, had never heard of, had the project, had never even heard of West Mason's CDC. People in Fraser Fields didn't hear the project, didn't, no one from West Mason's CDC came by to talk to them either. People on Ella didn't hear it. So I think we have a huge disconnect here on people even engaging the public that these projects are going into. So I would move that we actually take this support letter, or not, and our decision to do this, and actually put it to a later date when we can actually get good, good, good community engagement on this. I mean...
Okay, so just so we're clear, you're making a motion that we continue whether or not, the question of whether or not we issue the letters of support. And I know that there's information relative to that, so before I entertain a motion, or a second to that, Mr. Brady, what's the timing of that?
Mayor, Councilman Winkle, I think actually because the letters are due to the state by March 1st?
Mayor and City Manager, the letters are not required by March 1st. In fact, they send that after they receive the applications, March 1st. I think last year, we got it at, towards the end of March, early April, is when we, and that's when we came to council.
So after applications are received by the department, then they send out a request directly to us, it's kind of a form letter that asks us to check the box.
Correct.
Okay, so we don't, it comes after they make, or applications are due at the beginning of March?
Correct.
After those applications are received, then the Department of Housing sends out to all the local municipalities a letter requesting their, a letter of support?
That's correct.
So we have some time.
So how much time do we have?
I would, I would say by, we need to know by, towards the late March, I would say. And I think what the due date on those, I don't remember if anyone can remember what the due dates are on those letters. They're typically within two weeks, three weeks of that letter. So we probably have, probably to mid-April to get those back.
Okay, so Mr. Winkle, well, armed with that information, you'd like to make the motion that we continue the question still?
Absolutely. And can we, can we also move that the people that are involved in this actually knock the doors and talk to the owners of the houses?
I don't think there, we have the authority to ask them to do that. We can encourage them, of course. So, let's be clear, the motion is for all three projects to continue them?
No, I support the, you know, Art Space and this, and the allocation. I just think that the decision on whether we support these two projects should come when we actually get accurate information on the neighborhoods.
Okay, so there's been a motion made to continue writing a letter on those first, on those two projects. Is there a second to that motion?
Can I just get a clarification?
Yes.
And that's, that's fine. I guess the question is, I don't, I want to be clear, who the expectation, who's having these, what is it that you're, what are we, what is Council asking? I know we're putting this on hold, but I guess what I'm, I'm not clear as far what happens between now and then. What's the?
Maybe, maybe we can report.
If I'm wrong, Councilmember Winkle, I think what he's wanting is to have the developers go out and hold community meetings. With the second, I do it with the caveat that I think there's a lot of work that would have to be done if the developers actually can get the support in the neighborhood. I don't know if they'll be able to get the support of Fraser Fields or Temple Groves, but...
Thank you, Councilmember Winkle, that's exactly what I needed to hear. I just want to be clear, the expectations you're asking the developer to go have a...
Can I speak before the vote on that? Mr. Thompson.
Mayor, I'm going to agree with you on this. In my opinion, the developers should have already gone out and done their due diligence in the neighborhoods and let the neighbors know what's coming and what their project is about. I wholeheartedly support Art Space. I think we've put a lot of time, energy, and effort into that, so I will continue to support Art Space. The other two projects, I just can't get behind. Again, it's obvious that they haven't gone out to the neighborhoods and have had that discussion and done their due diligence, so therefore, I prefer that we don't prolong this, and we just get on with business.
Is there anyone here from New Frontier Senior Living? Do you mind coming forward, or can I ask you a question? Would you like to have additional time to do more community outreach, to try to get more community support for your project?
I'm Joe Ortega, Mr. Mayor, with ES Housing. We'll do what's necessary, but I, you know, I must say that, you know, when, at the very beginning, when we started in this process, we met with the councilman from that district who is the predecessor to Councilman Winkle, and then with you, Mr. Mayor, and you gave us a long list of what it would take to get the potential for city support, and we've done those things. We have met at where the planning department told us to meet with neighbors. We did get two immediate neighbors to, that did show up, and then we had another one call, and they were in favor of the development, because it's a senior housing development. You know, keep in mind that at 40% of median income, you're talking about $1,400 a month, a little bit more than that, that somebody, a senior, makes on their retirement. And at 60% of median income, you're talking about $2,800 a month of retirement income. It's not exactly the poor derelicts that are being depicted by some of the, one of the groups. Also, you know, inaccuracies that are stated, the project on Ella is immediately north of a, of a multifamily development that has been built, operation, and is doing an expansion, that's a family project. Immediately to the west is multifamily housing.
That's La Macita, correct?
La Macita.
La Macita is immediately to your south, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't mean to derail you, sir, but here's the question, the issue that we're discussing right now, is if we gave you additional time to try to gather additional community support, would you use that, or do you feel like you've done what you're going to do, and there's nothing additionally you're going to do if we give you more time?
If there was a clear bar that we were working toward, that would be, that was clear, I mean, define what you're looking for in community support, you know, to just say, to go out and get the community support, we believe we've met that threshold. But if you want to clearly define what the city means by community support, then yes, that's always beneficial. We do that everywhere that we work. You know, typically, you know, we, you meet with established neighborhood associations, you get a checklist that's given to you by the city as to what it takes to earn support.
Okay, so I think your answer is, yes, you'd use that time if we were to tell you specifically, here's what additional work we want you to do as far as community outreach goes.
Yes, sir. And now typically, that's months.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Winkle, does that, do you want to, does that clarify whether or not they'd be the beneficiaries of this or not?
Right, I think that if just the neighbors on the street actually knew about it when I knocked on their doors, that would be a great thing. Most, the majority of people, and I agree, there's only four single-family homes on that street over there in Ella. The rest of them are a bunch of quadplexes and other things like this. So, I mean, I think that is kind of the standard. If I knocked on the door, I should be able to hear something, "Oh, yeah, we know about that project," you know? I mean, that's my thinking.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your, anyone here from Gorman? I have same question for you, sir. If we give you additional time, would you anxiously receive that and go out and try to garner more community support, or do you feel like that's already happened?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Brian Swanton with Gorman and Company, we're going to do that, no matter what you decide today. I'm going to take the recommendation of Councilman Winkle and engage the community. That's what we do on every project. That's what we did on Escobedo. If your expectation is for me to come back in 30 days with unanimous neighborhood support, that's an impossible bar. I've been in this business too long. Our projects oftentimes get full support of the neighborhood. Oftentimes, it takes until that project is finished, built, and operating before I get that full support. We've never not been asked to come back to a community to build another project. We're doing that in Tempe right now. We're doing that in Tucson right now. We're doing that in Phoenix right now. This is a, an impossible bar, quite frankly, I think is the expectation, is that we come back and get full unanimous support. Can I convince Jake back there to support me? I don't know. Maybe I can. He's a reasonable guy, he's a straight shooter. I respect him a lot. But, you know, the bottom line is, no matter what support I get, I don't know that I'll get your support, Mayor, no matter what. You know, you don't like the location, the neighborhood. We've had good conversations with them back in December, just last week, and, you know, the first signs of opposition directly that I've received was through a flurry of emails between 3:30 and 5:30 last night. So I was caught off-guard by that, quite frankly. We'll do our best to engage the community and change that thinking, because our project is a really high-quality project. It's the perfect location. I've got 1,000 people on my waiting list at Escobedo to get in. The demand is here, it's now. This housing is desperately needed. I think we're one of the best workforce housing developers in this entire state, one of the top 10 in the entire country, and, you know, we're going to move forward, and we're going to engage the community no matter what you decide. So would additional time be helpful? Yes, I think it would. It wouldn't hurt. What, do I think it's going to change anything? I'm not so sure. We'll see. But I'm going to engage the community very aggressively, no matter what's decided, so...
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Montague, do you have something relevant to this to say?
Yes, the question was asked about West Mason's CDC. I'm a member of the board, also a member of the Steering Committee of Mesa Grandity Community Alliance. This project on Ella and on Main and Horn has not received endorsement from the board members or from the Steering Committee. Stephanie Wright talked to me last night. Her daughter has a new baby, and she's there this morning. She's the chairman of the West Mason's CDC. She opposes it. I'm not sure what... I'm not sure what Cynthia was thinking when she gave that letter. She's a very good, important part of our team there, but we do not and have not supported these two projects.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Other comments regarding the motion that's pending right now? I have to say, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Mayor, I'd be remiss if I didn't say anything. You know, I appreciate this discussion because the open meeting law, we can actually have a discussion on this and talk about it. Personally, I feel like we have all the information in front of us to make a decision today. You know, staff has done due diligence. There's a lot of information we've gotten from the developers. I've met with some of the constituents and listened to their concerns. But I wanted to share with you, I was reading through the minutes, and if I can, at the Economic Development Advisory Board meeting on January 3rd, our economic developer, he stated this, and this is on pages six and seven, I'll just read a couple paragraphs if I could. "A common thread of all three businesses mentioned Santander, Dexcom, and ATS was access to available workforce." He said that the west side of Mesa is very accessible to greater Phoenix. Having a certain number of qualified people within a certain drive time was very important to all three businesses. He noted that the Fiesta District had turned around a lot quicker than expected, and part of that was due to affordable properties. But it was also because there was a qualified workforce within 30 minutes' drive of that area. This is the reason why he continues to push for a certain quality of job in Mesa. He noted that he doesn't regularly go after retail, but he does go after high-earning jobs with good benefit packages. These type of high-earning jobs will draw an attractive workforce, who will then create a demand for housing, who will shop at local retail, provide a long-term economic benefit. He noted that because of this, the west Mesa, the west side of Mesa is very desirable." So I just want you to know that, you know, there's about 2,800 new jobs coming to West Mesa through these businesses, and hopefully I'm on agenda, Mr. Smith, if that's okay. He'll correct me. And I find that, you know, we're having this discussion, I'm all about the affordable housing. We have that. It's an important component of our community. I think that we need time to allow this to breathe a little bit. We're going to have an updated master housing plan. That's going to be forthcoming, and that's going to take a while. So in reality, I think that we just need to take a breather on this. I know since I do farm and we plant certain crops, there's a time to harvest these crops, and it does take a period of time. And this is a time for us just to step back and wait for updated housing plan. And then there's some other great things that'll be happening here, and if I could just go back to the presentation, I do have some notes here. You know, last, you as a council and mayor, mayor and council, you took a hiatus, I think, before us new guys came in, that you kind of pushed back a little bit and say, hey, we're going to give this time to breathe as the housing plan. And this is something that is a great thing. There's Sycamore Station that's going to be forthcoming. It's a robust development at Dobson and Main, and I find that very attractive to that area. The demands on our public safety, the calls of service in that part of the city is extremely high. I think that we need to focus better on these infill properties. We need to work with our employers and to help raise our median income in the West Mesa area. Ryan and I share a lot of the same constituents, you know, the same concerns, and I just feel like, you know, with the minimum wage going up, it's, how will it impact businesses? The other thing is, if I put my fingerprint on a project, I want it to be robust, dynamic, and help with the economic stability in our neighborhoods and areas. So with all due respect, I would support art space. I think it's a fabulous project. It brings a different dimension to that district and our city. I'm not in support of the other two projects.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other comments? So the motion that's pending right now is whether or not we grant additional time for the new frontier, New Frontier Senior Living project and the Main Street and Horn project to come back before the deadline, the actual deadline, which is in March. My inclination is to support it because, like I say, I'm not a no to all light tech projects, and I think, and as the applicants have indicated, when I met with them, I said, in order for you to be successful, you need to go out and engage the communities and come back and present the results of that to us, and that's a very relevant process. And so it's important to go out and do that. And folks from Gorman, like I said, they've done, even the folks who are against their project have complimented them on their professionalism and the outreach they've done to the community. So I'm afraid I just, this was their job to do, and if they failed to do a good job of going out and knocking doors and engaging, then that's unfortunate. You know, I wish they had done a better job. If they wanted their projects to be more successful, they would have worked a little harder to reach out a little bit better. So I'm not sure that, and I don't frankly hear that they are chomping at the bit to go out and do additional work on that. So I'm just afraid that granting them additional time is just not going to, probably, I don't know that they're going to come back with a much different result than we've already seen. So I'm going to oppose that motion, but my heart won't be broken if we decide to give them more time. Like I said, I'd love to give them every opportunity, but I just don't think that that's going to change the ultimate outcome. So I'm going to call for the vote. There's been a motion and a second made to delay making a decision on those two projects. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, all in favor. All opposed, please say no.
No.
One, two, three, four, so that motion fails. So, yes, Mr. Luna?
So can we make a motion that the art space project move forward? And does it require anything else?
Absolutely, yes. So is there a motion to preliminarily award $500,000 in fiscal year 1718 home funds to art space, subject to due diligence and public comment?
Are we voting individually on each one of these projects?
Well, right, we can, but right now, Mr. Luna's made a motion with regard to art space, and so we'll take action on that one, and then we'll come back and see if there's a similar motion on some of the other projects. So we have a pending motion on giving the $0.5 million in home funds to art space, subject to due diligence and public comment. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you. Mr. Winkle, I think, had his hand up. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Is there a motion relative to New Frontier Senior Living?
Let me make one last comment. Yes. These numbers weren't provided before, but I did a quick analysis, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I just literally researched this, but the Maricopa County median income is $54,299. Does that sound...
Mayor and Councilmember Winkle, thanks to my staff, they did provide to me what the median income for Maricopa County is actually 62,900, so...
So I want to make a point that, well, now I'm questioning...
That's just the median income. It doesn't, I apologize.
Sorry, that sounds really high.
Again, this is, this is coming from the HUD website, and it's 2016 Multifamily Tax Subsidy Project Income Limit Summary, and it just shows the median income for Maricopa County.
It was time to come back because I've never heard it pierce $50,000. That's been a long time. Okay, so I just, I want to make a point to the, you know, are we dragging down the economy in the area by providing housing to people their lower income? I'll use your numbers, the 62,900. If your target demographic is 40% to 60% of the median income, that puts it, based on the 62,900, to 25,000 to 38,000 roughly. So the average of that target range that you guys will be going after is $31,450. Again, this is all math that I've just done sitting here, so I don't know if these numbers are accurate. Now, looking at the census tract data, I'm showing that the average median income for that specific block currently today is $26,544. So essentially, by providing this low-income housing on average, we would essentially be raising the median income for that area by almost $5,000 per household. Again, the math is all done right here. I don't know how accurate it is, but I just want to make that point on the, specific to the Horn and Main project before we proceed with any other motions.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So the remaining issues that are in front of us is whether or not we're going to send letters. We've allocated the home funds, but do we want to send letters supporting either one of these other additional projects? New Frontier Senior Living on Ella or Main Street and Horn on Main Street? Would anyone like to make a motion to that effect? Mr. Thompson?
I'm not a proponent of putting the light tech along our Main Street either. I mean, we're, as a city, we have pushed hard to try to revive and revitalize our downtown in certain areas. If we want to do these one at a time, I will make a motion that we do not support Horn and Main Street light tech housing at that location.
Okay. So that we do not issue a letter in support of?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to not send that letter. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Winkle and Mr. Whitaker. And do you want to make a similar motion or a different motion with regard to New Frontier Senior Living on Ella? I think frankly, if we just don't take action, that's the same as...
Mayor, I'd just make the same motion that Councilmember, what's your name again?
Thompson.
Thompson made not to support our New Frontier Living. Sorry, Kevin.
Thank you. So there's a motion to not send a letter with regard to the project on Ella.
I have one question before we do.
Sure.
What's the address of that project?
The address on the Ella project?
2220. What is it?
2220 West Ella.
2220 West Ella.
Make them look just more.
If you're Google-Earing it, find La Macita and go to the...
Well, this project specifically isn't off of the light rail, right? It means a block more.
It's not on Main Street.
Okay.
Yeah, it's within...
It qualifies because of the distance.
It's within a half a mile.
I'm not concerned about the quality. I was just wondering if it was right off of Main Street, to your last point.
Okay, Mr. Freeman's made a motion to not send that letter. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Winkle and Mr. Whitaker. Okay, thank you very much. That was a great discussion. Appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is item 1B, to hear a presentation and discuss the city's economic outlook, fiscal, financial forecasts, and the current fiscal year 2017-18 budget update. Kansas, thank you. Good to have you back.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So this is going to be shorter, so just so you know, based on our other presentations. And with me again today is Brian Richel, one of the deputies in OMB. And so in the interest of time, I will make sure that we highlight the important parts. This is really taking that general fund view that we've looked at over two separate council meetings or council study sessions, and really putting it together to say, what does it mean? When we look at it. And so when we pull this together, what we're really talking about at the end of the day, we're talking about financial sustainability. So we looked at the revenue side, and we looked at the expense side, and what we're saying is, what operational items can we sustain over time? We want to make sure that the services that we provide today, we can also provide tomorrow. We just included some slides in here to remind you from those. These are just slides from the previous presentations of where we are, where we see our revenues going into 1718, also where we see our expenses going into 1718. As we pull these all together, excuse me, the most important part of this particular table is if I can have you look at the net sources and uses line, it's about halfway down the table. And if you look out into that 1718, 1818, and beyond, that's what we're looking at when we're talking about financial sustainability, is that is what we would call, that's the gap between the resources we think that we're going to get into the city and the expenses that we anticipate that we're going to have to spend in order to continue the services we currently provide. And so that's really what we're talking about. As we've gone through time, obviously, we've had these in the past, as we've gone through the recession, we've incurred these gaps, if you will, and we've had those reserve balances kind of, that has allowed us to fill those gaps on an annual basis, along with savings that we kind of occur each year as we go through. Just a reminder, when we're looking into the future on the expense side, which where our pressures are...
I hate to interrupt, Kansas, but do you mind going back to that slide? Because I think you've told us that that's, this is a critical slide, right?
It is. And then there's a graph later that kind of really shows it. These are the numbers behind that graph, though.
But just to make the point that I think you're making is that the critical line there is the net sources and uses, and those numbers are in parentheses, which I don't think is necessarily a good thing.
That is not a good thing, Mayor. Parentheses are a negative.
Correct.
So what that means is, in that particular year, we are anticipating that we will be collecting revenues less than the expenses we think that we'll have to make during that year.
Okay.
So Mayor, I think... Sorry, Mayor and Council. So this is one of those schedules that we spent a lot of time on in our analysis looking forward. Now, remember, this is a forecast. We still have to, as we mentioned, we're not even, well, I guess we're halfway through in the fiscal year, this current fiscal year, so we're trying to project forward expenditures and where we might be. Probably more significantly, we, on the revenue side, we still haven't got, we still haven't received the revenues, sales tax numbers for December or March. So I can tell you that most likely, that number, that the numbers that are important at this point that we can really make any changes to are from 1617 projected and everything to the right of that. That's what we're looking at and how we manage our budget. So the first column that is probably subject to change is the year that we're in, and just waiting and kind of monitoring expenditures and seeing trends there, but also just watching to see what might happen in the revenues. Throughout this forecast period, we've continued to assume a modest growth. We've had this conversation, modest growth in revenues. There is no presumption of a economic downturn, we suspect, and I'll just go on record, we suspect there probably will be somewhere in this forecast period. We didn't, we're not good enough to tell you. If we knew exactly where it was, when it was, we'd be making a lot more money, we wouldn't have a problem. But we expect it'll probably happen somewhere in this five-year, four-half-year period of time, but we haven't put it in here. We've just tried to be very, what we've done is compensate, try to be more conservative in our estimates on the revenues. On the expenditure side, we've been conservative again, and you can see the big bump in that net resources. So the net, between 1617 and 1718, we've discussed recently what those pressures are, those additional pressures that are coming to the city on the expense side. And you can see dramatically that change, how it changes the net income from a negative 9.6 to the 20.3. Now, you can see how those impacts continue throughout the forecast period. So as we've mentioned before, as we've initiated with the departments the budget process for next year, we've asked them to look into their budgets to look for about a 5% improvements and efficiencies and really to the bottom line. Now, we do, the good news is, at the bottom, where we have the reserve balance, we do have about an average fund balance that we're using, and you can see it gets drawn down very quickly. Reminder, the council has an adopted financial policy that's been in place for eight years or more, that establishes that our goal is to try to achieve at a minimum about 8% to 10% through the forecast period, a fund balance of 8% to 10%. Well, obviously, we're not there through the entire period of time. Now, what this does allow us to do, because we do have the fund balance that we have today, we're not solving for $20 million next year, but we need to take steps to try to, in over the next two to three years, be pretty aggressive to get to that point. So we're not going to go, I don't think at the end of the day, we're not going to be able to find $20 million, $25 million, I guess. It's actually, the number's probably closer to 25. $25 million in either new revenues or reductions. But our plan is to work diligently over the next three to four years and try to move into that, you know, get this thing leveled out. So what this is telling you, one, it's a forecast. We expect there'll be some changes in the projected amount for this year because we'll see actual numbers coming in on revenues and expenses. We'll be updating this again. Kansas, when's the next time we'd be updating this for council?
We'll be coming back on March 6th with the proposed budget, and that would have the, I'm sorry, April 6th. April 6th. We're not that fast.
Okay, April.
On April...
Okay, April.
On April 6th, we'll be coming back, and then we'll have updated numbers on the proposed budget at the same time.
Mr. Winkle.
Is this general fund, governmental fund balance only that, or is it after the enterprise fund is also in?
This is separate, completely separate from the enterprise fund, it's just the general fund.
The ending reserve balance for 1516 is 92 million, but then it drops to 50 million. Where happened to the $42 million if we only lost 13.9 million?
Okay, which, between where?
Sorry. So, the ending reserve balance for 1516 is 92.1.
Okay. So, here's why...
It actually goes to Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, that 1617 budget, we're estimated, where we thought the ending fund balance, we thought we would end at about that $64 million, and we actually ended at the 92, so you need to go over to the 1617 projection.
Eighty-two.
And that would have you follow it through.
So, the question is, what happened to the 10 million? The difference between 82 and 92? And we bought it down.
The good news is, because we did so well in 1516 between, I'm assuming it's a combination of the revenues coming in and some savings we realized.
Correct.
We added to that $78.4 million fund balance in 1516, ended up with 92.1, which was at the, and we didn't know that until completely, until the end of the fiscal year. So, that was a much better position to begin with for 1617. We had thought we were going to be at 64.6, instead, we were at 92.1. So, that was good. That was a good year where we saw that 13.7. So, we've carried the 92 million forward into the projected column.
And that's a great combination, if you look at that. That was one of the links that I provided last week, was that link to the 1516 year-end report. And in that year-end report, we have those kind of itemized, particular where the savings were on the expense side. We had some savings in our projection for our police department was one of the areas where they were able to come in within budget. They thought they would go over budget on their personal services. And then, we also some other savings areas, as well as our revenues, on the revenue side, that our sales tax was coming in stronger at the end of last year. It continued for a couple of months this year, and then we're kind of back down to where our projection was for sales tax. But we did have that kind of bump in sales tax through the end of spring.
Thank you. So, just to remind everybody, what Mr. Brady said better than I can, we've had, we've been operating with a higher reserve fund balance than was necessary for the past few years. And so, we've been, adopted a target to spend that down, to literally spend more than we take in over the last few years, to get that down to the, what we thought is a healthier balance of 8% to 10%. Fortunately, we had a better-than-expected year last year, so our fund balance remains higher than we thought it would be, in spite of the fact that we'd budgeted to reduce it. So, but as you can see, if we continue at the pace that we're at now, in just a few years, we have a negative fund balance. So, we still need to, as we will discuss ad nauseam over the next few months in these meetings, we're still talking to our departments and asking them to take reductions and to come in and be frugal. But we still do have this nice problem, which is, we've got a larger than maybe defensible fund balance, and we need to spend, continue to spend that down a little bit.
Yeah, well...
Would that be a fair way to say it?
Well, I think, you know, there's a lot of debate about that fund balance. I will tell you, in 2008, 2007, that fund balance was about the same as it was at the end of 1516. It was probably higher, it was probably 25%. But for that fund balance, it saved us when we hit a recession and we lost $16 million in one year in just revenues. So, that, those, the 8% to 10% is really the minimum. That's like one month of reserves total. So, if you take, you know, 8% to 10%, you know, 20%, that sounds like a lot, but it will tell you, in the world of economics and sales tax specifically, the fact that we're so dependent on sales tax is probably why I would say it's not a reasonable amount. Now, you can see what's happening is, now we've got other rising costs. We've got a $12 million hit to us that was not in our forecast. And as a result, when you talk, you can see what happens to that additional impact of those costs between 1617 and 1718. It dramatically changes the trajectory of that reserve and begins drawing it down quickly. Now, I'll tell you, Council, I just want to be clear, in 1617, we believe that number's really conservative. There's probably $6 or $7 million that we will, you'll probably see swing a little bit to our favor when we kind of sort through this year, we have sales tax coming in. We're still scrubbing some numbers on expenditures today, and so, we're hoping that with not a lot of effort and also based on some expenditures that rolled over into this, into this year, that number may improve a little bit. But I think the point here really is more about trends. When we talk about forecasts, sometimes easier to stuck on a specific number. The thing is, from a management standpoint, long-term, it's more about a trend. It's the idea that it's a pressure is coming down where we're spending, oh, sorry, where the pressure is where we're spending more than we're bringing in, and we've got to figure out how to rebalance that. And that's really what I'm more concerned about, is that difference between what we bring in and what we spend in any one year. And so, over a period of time, obviously, that erodes your balance. So, our goal is, the next two to three years, is try to, you know, reverse that and get us back to a point where we're structurally sound, where we're spending not any more than we're bringing in, maybe less would be ideal, so we can build that reserve up again. Now, lots of things will change. Unfortunately, things change not to our favor with the expense side. We're hoping the economy is robust and continues. I just caution all of us that somewhere, I think, I hope I'm wrong, but somewhere in this forecast period, we expect we're probably going to see some adjustment in the economy and just the trajectory, and you look at how things cycle, we're, we've been moving up for a long time, but we've tried to be modest on our forecast too. So, if that happens, our adjustment hopefully won't be so big.
Mr. Luna.
Mr. Brady, and the idea to keep the 8% to 10% reserve, it affects our bond rating, is that correct?
Yeah, we share that, the rating agencies. And listen, when 8% to 10%, there are communities, when you look at ratings, when we talk about ratings for cities, 8% to 10%, they're well above that, two or three times more than that. So, that's kind of like what I'd say is our bare minimum. You don't want to, and almost like you don't really want to go into your only at 8% to 10%, just because if something happens, you could go below it. And that's why we use this forecast to say, look out three years, here's where we're going to be, so we can say, okay, how much we need to adjust, and try to maintain that, at least in a forecast period, to try to bring those up closer to 80% throughout the forecast period. Now, most likely, because we're conservative, each year, we're probably going to end up a little bit higher than that. But the fact that we ended up at 20, almost 23% last year, the 92 million, you see how quickly that 92 million gets reduced by maybe about $9 million this year and $20 million again next year. So, quickly, 92 becomes 70 or less, and then it becomes an issue. And that's why we're, that's how we look at it.
Mr. Thompson.
Chris, does any of the, does the total uses, do you have any assumptions in there for, built into that at all, for the refinancing of debt, like our GO bonds and so forth?
So, yeah, that shows up somewhere else, but go ahead.
Right. So, Mayor and Councilmember Thompson, when it comes to the general fund side, the general fund does not actually pay for the general obligation debt, the secondary property tax does. So, when we do any kind of the refinancing, it's on the secondary property tax side. It allows us to better finance in the future. It does not affect this particular fund balance.
So, it provides relief for future tax levies? That's how it would help us out.
So, the question I have is, well, what is our goal? I've heard the 8% to 10%, and now having heard you explain recent history, and we all see how volatile the financial situation of the world is right now. I mean, you're right, I think it's foolish not to expect a downturn will occur again. That would be contrary to world history. So, should we, should we still aspire to have an 8% to 10% balance, or should we aspire to have more than that?
Mayor, I think the way we deal with it, and Candace can jump in here, is we use that as our goal within a forecast model, but understand that when we develop the forecast model, we're giving you very conservative numbers. So, what we do is, we really try to build in that we're, hope we're wrong, and that it'll be better than that. And so, to your point, yes, we show 8% to 10%, but it will be, it won't be unusual for us to probably be in that 15% to 20%, just to your point. We don't necessarily try to plan it into the forecast, because that would put a lot of stress in here. I don't know how, it's almost like we, the way we get there, Mayor, is by using very conservative numbers on expenditures and revenues. Use the 8% to 10% as kind of our goal, but realize we put in a lot of conservative estimates. Is that, Candace, what's your...
Yes, so Mayor, when we look at it, when we're looking at it, it goes, I personally would never want to go into a budget with an 8% fund balance, because that is our absolute minimum, and we don't want to drop below that. And so, we always want to shoot for over that 10% as a minimum, just to make sure that we're within the 8% to 10% if something were to happen during the year. We do look at, out of those different areas, as Mr. Brady mentioned, we don't have the, we know the economic correction, as we kind of term it in our office. We know there's an economic correction coming. Everyone's talking about it, the economists are talking about it. Really, it's a matter of when, not if. At this point, we're thinking it's probably in the 1819, 1920 fiscal years. That's where we're kind of staying within our office, and that's kind of what we're seeing out there. So, going into that, we'd want to try to plan that we would have reserves greater than our minimum balances as we go into those fiscal years, so that when that economic correction happens, we're able to absorb it without changing the quality of our services to our residents. That would be the goal as we look forward. As we're looking through that, right now, we can see that we're not set up to do that. We're not set up to go into the 1819 and 1920 fiscal year with that kind of buffer for, as we are today. And so, that's why we'll be working with the departments. Over the next month, we'll be meeting with the city manager's office. They just submitted their budgets. They were asked to go out and look for 5% efficiencies and reductions within their operating budget, and then bring those forward, and we'll be talking about those over the next month. And then, we'll kind of pull all this together and then come back in April 6th, not March. On April 6th, we'll be coming back with anything that we've seen so far on the revenues. Have we seen them trending a little bit differently, or how are we seeing those going? As well as what we'd be recommending going into the 1718 fiscal year, on what we'd want to do to try to reposition ourselves, to be better able to handle that economic correction when it does come.
But looking at the chart that's in front of us, right now, we dip below the 8% to 10% bare minimum with fiscal year 1819.
Right.
Right, so obviously, we need to...
Right. So, to your point, and that's, yeah, exactly. We need to address that. So, what it means is, and I guess that's why we kind of hesitate, it might, it might mean that we actually try to work on the 1718 forecast ending fund balance and try to get that up to 20%. That sound, well, why 20%? Because we know the next year, we've got to have cash to absorb another $10 million in...
In an economic correction.
An economic correction, so...
And reduced revenues, possibility of...
So, when we say 8% to 10%, it's the minimum, but we have to look at it. Some years, we may need more to be ready for the following year. Does that make sense? Because like, if we're in 13, we can't, we don't want to just wait till 1819 to solve that problem. We've got to start now. And by, one way to do that is be creating savings and holding on to revenues, so that we'll be able to, they'll be in place by the time we get to 1819.
Why the huge drop-off between 1819 and 1920? I mean, we have kind of a, is there some unusual debt that becomes due then, or is there something extraordinary?
There's no debt in here.
There's no debt in here. So, some of the issues between, so we're looking at 1819, when you say the drop-off, really, again, look at your net sources and uses. Fiscal year 1819 is when we have some of the things kind of coming in. So, we have the $12 million for the PSPRS increases in 1718. That $12 million continues into 1819. And then, we add $6 million, which is our current estimate for what we think the hall case for PSPRS will do. So, that $4 million, or $6 million, excuse me, is in there as well. And then, in 1920 is when we are anticipating a full year of operations of the light rail extension, which is $4 million on the expense side, but we do have some revenue offset that we've anticipated, and so, the net's about 2.2. So, you do have those that start to accumulate, and then, when you add in, if there's going to be salary changes or anything like that, as we're forecasting out our personal services, we do forecast out promotions and increases in salary and so forth, that those may happen over, over the time period. And then, you just really, it's really accumulation of expenses.
Candace, I think the mayor would help, the mayor, I think what he's asking is that he sees that net loss reducing. You have a, we have a pretty good bump in sources between 1819 and 1920. Do you know what that's related to, from the 419 to the 433?
Okay. You're just talking about the sources, on the sources side. I can go back and look into the detail on the sources. It's been a while since we dug into the detail. But it should be, there's a two-year lag in our urban revenue tax, which is the income tax, so I can go back and take a look at that and see where we're at on that. I can go back and give you the total numbers.
Great.
We have, between the 1617 and the 1718, we gave you those by revenue source, and we can do those all the way through the forecast period. I can send you that detailed information.
Great. Thank you. So, just to put a quick summary on it then, I think this is more of what we already knew, which is, we've got significant PSPRS increases over the next two years, and light rail and other things that we know are going to have significant impacts on our budget, and so, I see that. I think that's what's reflected in these numbers. So, thank you. Mr. Winkle.
It just, in simplification, is this telling us that we are not bringing enough, this alone, sales tax alone, that we are not bringing enough sales tax in to meet our spending needs?
Mayor and Councilmember Winkle, that would be correct. We're not bringing enough revenues in.
All revenues.
Total, all revenues.
But sales tax is by far the greatest portion of it, but all revenues.
Sales tax is over a third of all of the revenues that come into this particular fund. And then, we also have the state shared revenues, if you go back to the resources.
And that's chart, that chart that shows that, is that page seven?
Should you just put it up?
Yeah. So, here's, these are the resources that are coming in, so these are the different categories of resources. So, you can see the local sales tax is by far the greatest one at the top. We also have all those state shared revenues, which is why we're so, as we mentioned before, so vigilant in watching the state and making sure that they're not changing our formulas. As there's a bill out there right now that might affect our state sales tax portion that we get, having to do with the universities. Those types of bills, as they go through, affect our revenue streams and then would just make us, the gap larger. But yes, that's a correct assessment. The revenues that we are currently predicting or anticipating to receive are not meeting our expenditure needs as we see them today.
Mr. Freeman.
Hi, Candace. Thank you. In the bottom says it excludes a $6 million carryover. Could you just explain what that means for us new guys?
I can. Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, it is a budgeting term that we use. So, what happens at the end of one fiscal year is, we will have savings in the fact that we'll have ordered items and they will not have come in. Usually, the big one is vehicles, so vehicles that take a long lead time, and other types of items that are outstanding in one fiscal year. We have obligations to them, but we haven't actually paid those bills. The payment of those bills will actually happen in the following fiscal year. And so, what we do is, we carry over funding for that, because the revenues were already set aside for those items, and we carry that over into the next fiscal year. So, they kind of net each other out. This year, it was $6 million in outstanding obligations, and so, there's $6 million in the 1718, or excuse me, 1617 budget, that was actually last year's expenses that didn't get expended till this year.
And that's a really good question, because there, we believe also, as we looked at this number yesterday, we may have the $6 million in the expense side.
Correct.
But we may not attract the sources.
The revenue side. So, we're, so you may see some of these numbers change ever so slightly. It will not change your net sources and uses in 1718 and beyond. That number won't change. But in order to try to simplify our carryover process because of these types of questions, we did try a new method of budgeting this year, and we're still kind of getting the tweaks, getting the, tweaking how we present that to make sure that we're consistent. So, I think we may have missed that one piece on this table. But that's, in essence, what the carryover, so, and even when we do the adopted budget, But that's in essence what the carryover, so, and even when we do the adopted budget, you'll have, when we do the adopted budget, the schedule for the adopted budget, we do the operating budget. And then we kind of do carryover as a below the line. And that way, when you're looking from one operating budget to another operating budget, you don't have just timing. So maybe $6 million one year, maybe $9 million, maybe $4 million. And that kind of changes that trending, if you will, of the operating budget. So we kind of try to put that below the line. It's just a timing issue on the expense.
Yes, Mr. Winkle. I'm Torrey Whitaker.
One day we'll get this right.
Before anybody else.
I'm fully confident one day we'll get this right.
Someday we'll get it.
Forgot my question.
Well, that's because Mr. Winkle was supposed to be.
If we get to 20, the 20, 21 year and our reserve balance is negative $21 million.
Never happens.
We will not get to a negative reserve balance in the city of Mesa.
Sure. So how do we solve that problem?
That's what we've been talking about. We have to start now. That's why we started with the departments and finding ways to come up with about a 5% reduction. I don't know, you know, we're going to look to see how much of that can get. We believe that over the three, next three, three years, two to three years, every year, we need to come up with about, you know, $6 to $7 million in net savings. Now, that could be both increases in revenues and reductions in expenditures. So our goal here, and why we show you this forecast, is that's how we look at it. So we're don't, going to try to solve for that $27.4 million shortfall in 21, 20, 21, we start now. And each year, we get to about $7 million or so. And if we can do that each year and reduce that net loss by $7 million a year over the next three years or so. We believe that then we'll be able, we'll be in a better position to, you know, we'll be, that won't happen. We'll avoid that. Frankly, we've got to do that now because we can't go into 18, 19 with a 7% or less than 7% fund balance. But we start now. Even though we have large reserves, we start now. We do it again next year, maybe the following year. Now hopefully, it's both a revenue solution and both a inefficiency solution. It takes, we think it'll take both of those to get to that last, last column.
Let's look at the graph real quick. I just want to kind of show you, if we kind of look at the graph from last year. Back when we thought things were, were looking up in 2016. So just to give you kind of idea, and especially Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker. As we're ever, as we, as we've been working on this over the years, we came ever so close to getting that gap closed. We were narrowing it each, each year. We were making progress on it. And this was last year was, we were showing that we still had that kind of gap going forward, but that they were about the same. So that the revenues and our expenses, we thought were increasing, or the needs and the revenues were increasing at the same rate. So that is more of something that we can fix, right? It's something that we can look at. If we can just narrow that, narrow that one more year, we might actually have them in alignment. Unfortunately, as we go to the 2017, because of these new expenses coming in from PSPRS. It changed the, what the expenses are that we actually need to cover. So that red line at the top is that expense. And you can kind of see the difference just by, even without the numbers, the slope of the line is greater than the slope of the green line, which is our revenues that we have available to cover those. And so that creates a bigger gap. And the next one just kind of shows the, the difference of what last year's forecast, where we were sitting. And where we are sitting so far on this year's forecast and the difference between that one year makes. And that's again, another one of the reasons why we look at that reserve balance, we want to make sure that we don't just have the 8 to 10% because this is just a one-year change between where we thought the forecast was and now our kind of new reality of where the forecast is. And then just go to the last. And so we've already talked about where we're going, where we're going to go from here. So what do we do now and where do we go from here? And to address Councilmember Whitaker's question, how do we, how do we avoid, you know, that negative fund balance or just the reduced deduction fund balance? So again, we're going to be working with the departments, excuse me, throughout the next month on their, on their submissions. So they have done their submissions into our system and we're reviewing those right now. They'll be meeting with the city manager's office to find out what areas they did identify, how that will affect their operations and their targets. You know, their, their performance and their mission, how would that affect that? We'll pull those all together and come back and see with you on April 6th. And at that time, we'll again, do an update on the forecast if we've seen anything different come through. At that point, we will have at least our November sales tax, which is the beginning of the Christmas season. We will still won't have December at that point, unfortunately. But we can see how that's going. And then we'll also be coming back with the proposed budget. So we're coming back with, this is our proposed budget for 17, 18. These are the items that we have identified for reduction or elimination. These are the programs that we're sustaining to make sure that we have quality services. And this is the impact it would have on this particular forecast going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Candace, I'm, I'm kind of stuck on page six on that gap. And Chris, maybe you can help too. But between 14, 15, 15, 16, 16, 17. When the total sources started climbing pretty significantly, what were, what was the uses? Because I, I'm, I'm trying to rack through the rolodex in my head, trying to figure out what that uses spike was that mirrored that source rate going up.
It's going to sound a lot familiar to what's happening today. We got hit with an $8 million bill for pension also, but we, we were able to spread it out over, was it two years?
We spread it over, phased it in over two years.
Two years. So we did a five and a three, I think it was. But again, that was.
Five million, three million?
Yeah, that was a big hit.
And then we, we absorbed that within the operational budget. So we did expenditure reductions in order to cover that, that particular PSPRS.
That would be the largest, I mean, that's one big chunk. There's probably a whole variety of other things in here, but that was one of those unexpected items.
It just seemed weird that all of a sudden, your sources went up, but then your expenses paralleled that. And I'd almost expect to see, you know, like a cross there at some point in time and then.
Yeah, we would too. We would too. Yeah. And remember, we're ma, we're having to really govern or temper the expenses too. Because we still, or maybe it's this year or next year, we, we are still trying to recover back from where we were in 2006 as far as sales tax receipts. Am I saying that right?
Correct. We're actually on, on, with the increase that happened in fiscal year 15, 16, we had that little bump over our anticipated sales tax receipts. We're actually on par for where we were back in '05, '06 for sales tax receipts. So we've, we've come back to the pre-recession dollar amounts. Unfortunately, our expenses have not stayed at the pre-recession dollar amounts for cost.
Thank you. Additional questions? If you don't mind, I'm going to, I have a question under this agenda item that actually has maybe perhaps more relevance under a later agenda item. But I'm going to ask it now so that Mr. Smith doesn't scold me for asking it later under the next agenda item. But as council knows, a week from now, we're having a strategic planning session. And we are, at that meeting, we're going to talk about, do we like the strategic goals that we've set as a city so far? How do we want to tweak those? And going forward, kind of a new thing that we want to do is add some very measurable indications just to make sure that we're trending for or against those goals. And so I think one of our existing city priorities is having a sustainable economy and being fiscally prudent. And I think we've done a great job of that to this point. But I, I would ask, I think we need to be reminded, what are the threats to our financial stability as a community? And we've identified some of those here in the last few minutes. And so Candace, going forward, if we were to have a, a dashboard item that could be a barometer for us as to, oh, wait, look. That negative trend that we have been hoping wouldn't occur is, is happening. Or, you know, sales tax revenues are down, or general fund balance is declining more than we, at a faster rate than we wanted it to. Or, you know, what would be, if, if, off the top of your head, what would be two or three leading indicators with regard to our financial stability as a community?
Mayor, I think that when you're looking at the sales tax, the sales tax actually tells you what's going on in the economy. But both local and state. So the state sales tax in our, in our revenue sharing tells you what's going on in the state. And your locals telling you is what's going on locally. Just as, as a note, when we're doing our forecasting, there's a lot of other things that we look at too for our economy that seems like it may not be related to financial. Which kind of catches people off guard, but we do our barrel rate sets. How many new houses are going in? How many people are ordering their solid waste barrels? That's going to talk about our population. Is it growing? Our tonnage at the landfill is, are they buying items? And the more they buy, the more they throw away. And so those are some unique things that kind of look at our area as a whole. And you may think we don't, those would be odd things to look at when we're talking about sales tax, but we actually look at those to try to forecast our sales tax. And do we have a good Christmas? Well, I don't know. What was the tonnage at the landfill during December and January? You know, those types of things are kind of things you might not think about, but things that we look at for our revenues.
Mayor, if you, Mayor and Council, each month, we provide you the monthly sales tax report. And we've been doing that. That's probably, like Candace says, and in there, the ones that I look at as retail sales, that's the largest portion. And then there's others, but then in the, we've separated out, I think, in the, before you get to, and then you see construction sales tax.
Yes.
So those two kind of become barometers of how, what's going on in the economy of Mesa. Both you get the retail sales, you kind of see the spending habits, you know, people are employed, income levels, are they able to spend money, discretionary dollars? But then the construction sales tax shows us, you know, the level of value of activity. Sometimes we can, we have to be careful. Permits are interesting to know, but they're not necessarily the full indicator of the economy. Because you could have, for example, you have a lot of permits, but they may be related to remodels. But if you see that construction sales tax, that tells you large new values of improvements that are being made in Mesa. And that's, and that's a significant number. So those are some of the key indicators that you have today you might want to look at.
Thank you. Mr. Luno.
Thank you, Candace. Very wonderful presentation. If it's okay with Jim, can I ask Ms. Scott to come up real quick? If he can talk about it, you know, certainly, we're talking about sales tax and what it represents to Mesa. We're talking about at the local level, state level. But I think that we can certainly lobby our congressional delegation relative to e-fairness. Because a lot of us shop online, but we are not able to collect any of those sales tax. So if there's something that we can do to work with our lobbyists in Congress to lobby our congressional delegation that e-fairness is important. We're missing a lot of money. And I just read that $23 billion on sales tax that, that cities can collect. Something that we need to work on at a national level as well.
Sure. And Mayor, Vice Mayor, the national organizations, National League of Cities, United States Congress of Mayors, a lot of the trade groups and organizations have been working diligently with Congress over this. I think we're waiting to see the posture that the new administration will take. We're, we're waiting to see the posture that the new administration is going to take on this issue. There, there have been companies, obviously, that have been working with the state and working with cities diligently. Amazon and others who do have a presence in Arizona, so they do pay sales tax on purchases made through, through that company, for example. But there are others that certainly we would like to see some resolution to this issue. Because as you said, I mean, it's certainly trending more and more for online sales and, and that's revenue we would certainly like to see. That coupled with, as you alluded to, or as Candace alluded to earlier, this notion that even small trickles at the legislature, state legislature, lead to large impacts to the cities. There is the Board of Regents proposal that Candace alluded to. But there's also exemption bills that we see each and every day. There's, there's one that's being heard dealing with diapers and other hygiene products being exempted from state sales tax. And which would, you know, certainly have that trickle effect as we talk about issues that continue year in and year out. Construction sales tax, Mr. Brady just alluded to that. That's a huge revenue source for cities and towns. And there are proposals every year calling for major overhauls of construction sales tax that frankly, many times don't take into account the impact it would have on communities. Some might be advantageous to us, but would devastate neighboring communities. And so those are all the types of things that the legislature needs to balance and that we have to stay diligent in, in cities of trying to educate them on.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Candace. I, I made a note here on the Gilbert Road, the Gilbert Light Rail Extension, $4 million annual increase. And what am I, my, what are our revenue streams with that? And we're planning for a $4 million increase in 18, 19. And what's our operating cost today? Two questions. Operating cost today, $4 million increase, I guess.
So Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, I will have to get back to you on the total operating costs. I don't have it on the top of my head and I would hate to do the wrong number for you. I'm making sure I got the Gilbert one for you.
Okay.
And so we do have different revenue streams in the, in the transit overall. So when it comes to the light rail, we actually get a revenue back from the actual, the fare box, if you will. There's not a fare box on a light rail, but in essence, when you pay. And it's based on where you actually board the light rail. It's a percentage that we actually receive back. And so you can see why it's a $4 million operating cost annual for that portion of the light rail. That would be the increase of our percentage. So that light rail, it's a percentage of the whole system. And that's how the operating is, is doled out to all the participating cities, is our percentage of our, my, number of miles that we have within the city of Mesa.
Scott, there's a, what's the number per mile approximately now? That may help. Just give us a ballpark number. You gave it to me the other day.
Mayor, Council, I, I believe the number I gave Mr. Brady was somewhere in the ballpark of around 1.5 million per mile for operating. And, and that's, that's a number that stays consistent through all three light rail communities. And, and Metro assesses that amount to each community equally. And as Candace indicated, then fare box recovery though is based upon where the boarding's occurred. So the, the more people who board in Mesa is, is a good thing. So our, our park and ride lots are, are strategically located to help us on that recovery.
So a two and a half mile addition would come very close to that $4 million. So what is the total then, I don't know what the total length then is into the city, but whatever that total mileage is. And I think Mr. Butler's pretty close in that number, a million and a half per mile.
I guess the other part of my question, how much revenue do we actually get off of that?
We can get, Councilmember, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman.
I think it's just good for me to know.
We can get you that. We can get you at least the last time, we can get you what the net number is that comes to us.
Yeah.
Sure. We can, we can get that provided.
People ask that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, for this one, I can't find my slide. Can you, can you look at the slide? Oh, nevermind, I found it. So for this particular segment, because we are adding to the end of the line, we are anticipating 1.8 million dollar increase in those revenues. But I can get what the total revenues are. But we're looking at eight, 1.8 million dollar increase is what we're anticipating, along with the $4 million increase in expenses. So a net of, we're, we're anticipating a net of $2.2 million to the general fund.
Yeah, that's what I was after.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that is on slide, what slide was it? Five. On slide five, we did just a very quick summary of the Gilbert Light Rail Extension.
Thank you, Council. Any additional questions for Candace? Yes, Mr. Whitaker.
I hate to keep going back to the whole PSPRS thing, but at these unexpected impacts to our budget, at what point will we have our own studies? Or at what point will we work with the PSPRS board to say, we need accurate numbers so that we can forecast our budget for the upcoming years?
Yeah, well, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, I think the challenge here in this case was, this is a result of a court case, so I don't think anybody predicted it. So that, that's what's come about is, is the reversal of the decisions that were made in 2011. So, but for the court case and the challenge to the changes that were made in 2011, we would have not had this, well, either one of these. I guess there, but it would be some adjustments.
We would have had, we would have had some as they're adjusting their investment income and those types of things. There would be, have been some of it.
But your, to your point, we do, you're, let's strip that part out. But yes, we need to have a better communication and clarification from the board out into the future about what the number is and the assumptions of the different variables that are used in the calculation of the, of the pension system and where we want it to be long-term. So yes, we're, we are, I don't think that's going to happen quickly. It's a pretty sophisticated. But we're trying to work with the city of Phoenix to get consultants that we would both, would share in the funding to go in and help us, give us that counsel. And as soon as we have that study completely determine the scope of work and we'll get a timeline, I will show that with Council.
Great. How much of the PSP increase was due to the actuaries being inaccurate? And what percentage was due to the Hall case? Or like, what were the actual numbers?
So Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, remember, the Hall case is not in 17, 18. We won't feel that effect until 18, 19. We're estimating $6 million for the Hall case. The other ones, if we go back to the expenditure presentation from last week, there's a slide that I have that I, I can give out after the, if you want to take a look at it. Where we broke down the $12 million and where it came from. And so you can kind of, kind of walk through that. How much was the change in investment income? How much was the change due to changing the, the major change was the, the COLA or the, the cost of living increase. That is in, that is, took the place of what used to be the permanent base adjustment that they had. And so that's really where the bulk of it is coming from. And I can't, Chris probably has it faster than me, but it's probably about $7 million, I want to say, was the, of the 12 is due to that. So when we changed over the plan, they're now going with that cost of living increase, which is an every year thing. It's lower than what the permanent base adjustment was, but it's automatically every year versus whenever the investment plan reaches a certain point. And so that is the major change, going from what used to be that permanent base adjustment, which the 2011 reforms actually took away from current employees. And then the, the case put them back so that you can't take those away. And then that, with the state legislation where we had that constitutional change, where we could make a change one time, that was the change. So change in that cost of living on an annual basis. That's the bulk of it. And then there's a couple more lines there on changing the investment income. That seven, 7.6 down to 7.4, something like that, 7.5, I think. And then it'll be 7.4 the following year. So that, that's kind of the line of where we think they're coming from for the 12 million.
I was confused because there were, there were two cases. There was a 2011 reform case and the Hall case. So I was confused by the.
Correct.
The 12, I thought that the 12 million, I forgot about this from last week, was due strictly to the annual investment return.
Correct. It's, it's everything before the Hall case. It's everything before the Hall case. It's, they went through and did the, did all those actuarial changes, and did all those changes based on those previous reform, overturning of the previous reform, all before the Hall case was settled. And so those rates for 1718 were already established, and then the Hall case came out. And so as they start walking through those, we'll see those in the 1819 rates.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions, Council? All right. Thank you, Candace. We'll look forward to more presentations.
April 6th.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, item two, information regarding job order contracting projects. Council, any questions regarding those projects that you've seen on your agenda? Hearing none. Item three is acknowledged receipts of minutes in various boards and committees. Thank you, Mr. Luna has made a motion. Mr. Thompson seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. Next item, item four is review items on the agenda for the February 23rd, 2017 study session. So that's our meeting a week from today. I think you have been given a copy of the agenda for that meeting. I alluded to this meeting a few minutes ago. I think we, I'm anxious for us to take full advantage of this, and so I'm anxious for it to be the, the meeting that you want it to be, Council. So this, I'm glad this is on the agenda, so we can have this discussion and, and get feedback prior to the meeting to make sure that, that we live up to your expectations at that meeting. Yes, Mr. Winkle.
I just have one question on it. We talk about the direction of existing strategic priorities, and I don't, it doesn't have like a, anything saying, are we adding additional new ones, changing things, or?
Says at the last part of that, at the bottom of that.
Possible and possible additional.
Okay, okay. Thank you for clarification.
Okay. So just to remind everybody, I, the existing city priorities or strategic plans are safety, and Ian, correct me if I say this wrong, safety, workforce, probably workforce development, sustainable economy, strengthening neighborhoods. Am I going too fast?
You've got it.
Oh, they're on here. I'm sorry. Okay. It's right here. Oh, there it is. Transforming neighborhoods and placemaking. So those are broad enough, you can fit a lot under them, but we can change, we can add new priorities, we can eliminate priorities, we can change the way it's worded. That, we're just trying to establish a baseline for what this council, what you're, what we want the priorities to be. And then, like I said, the other aspect of this is, I think we want to, it's, it's nice to have goals, but it's nice to monitor and measure those goals. And so the question is, what are the important measurements that we want to make more specific goals on? You know, we want to move from an eight to a 10, or whatever. So if you have thoughts on that, please come prepared to share those. Yes, Mr. Luna.
So as we look at these, are we going to be doing a SWOT analysis on them, or how's that going to work in terms of as we go through them?
Not necessarily. What we had planned on doing, very simply, was to help move this along for Council, is to really kind of put up on a screen, if you would, each one of them, and just let the Council have an opportunity to kind of discuss each one, and see if you want to edit, delete, edit, create new, what, you know, and just kind of give you the opportunity. But I think what we thought was, let's start with what we have, and then if we want to get rid of something, or change it, or add to, then we could go through that process together. So we thought, at least use the straw man as the existing one, but then let the Council certainly weigh on any new possibilities.
Mr. Thompson.
So what I would suggest for Council is that you have your assistants at least go in and pull the dashboard, look at our strategic goals that we set and developed for last year, excuse me, and then start thinking through some of the things that you would like to see as new goals, or new direction that you would like to see for each of the departments, where we have our, our strategic planning, where we have our strategic planning sessions, so that you come prepared and you understand what we're, what we're looking at, and where we're wanting to go.
Yes, Mr. Winkle.
Is this going to include, so last year when you made strategic priorities, a measure or something that said, yes, we completed this, completed this, and so now we don't have to do that anymore, or?
Most of these were like ongoing initiatives and programs, so that the, the dashboard that's created is just always updated and continuously out there. I'm trying to remember, there may have been specific, a specific project, the beginning are in, but typically, these are larger kind of policy directions with kind of, and then, you know, there might be a project underneath it, but the dashboard and, well, the initiative's usually kind of a larger vision, and then the dashboard is a way to measure that over a period of time. Now, the Council may, it may come out that there is a specific project, that's fine too, but typically, it's kind of an ongoing vision is what we're typically looking for at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure there were very many, if any, specific numbers that we want, we're here and we want to go there. So this is a new positive, in my, in my mind, way of doing things, that we have very measurable outcomes. And it's good and bad. I mean, it, we're going to have these dashboards come up, and, and we're going to, if we're not trending in a good direction, you know, we're going to, that's going to be exposed to the public and to everybody very quickly, and so it'll invite criticism. But I think that's okay. I mean, better that we be criticized for early on discovering that we're trending in a bad direction than wait until the end of the year and seeing how it really seriously impacted us. So I think it's a good move. Mr. Luna.
Just real quick, in terms of the format, are we going to be using technology as we evaluate these goals, or how is that going to?
We're not using the, I don't know, but everybody gets their own little, no, we're not doing that. It's going to be more free-flowing. We'll have really just a projector with, and we'll have a computer there with a screen, and we'll just be able to edit on the fly right there, take the input, so. And I think we're leaving some flip charts and things, if that helps the Council on the input, and trying to make decisions. I know it's fun trying to edit a paragraph with seven people, but we'll give it a shot and see what happens. So, and then, oh, Mayor, when you're done with this, I want to just talk about, suggest one more item to go to this agenda real quick.
Well, please, go ahead.
It came up, and I, and you know, we kind of missed this. We don't have Council meeting, obviously, this coming Monday because of the holiday. We will have a Council meeting, the Monday following this Thursday. Would the Council like us to spend maybe 10, 15 minutes and at least, like we typically we do on a Thursday, review the Monday agenda for following this Thursday? Would that be helpful, just in case there's something that came up you need us to follow up with, or?
Yeah.
Or, I mean, sometimes we've done this, where we just go to that Monday morning and, and we take it, but I would, since we're meeting, it's not, we usually do that when we can't meet, but we are meeting, we're just meeting somewhere else. Would you?
Sure.
Would you like us to go ahead? We'll just put it as the first item, and that way, if there's some item on the agenda that Council needs some follow-up, we can do that, and then move into this. Is that what that be?
That seems like a good idea to me, just in case.
Okay, we'll add that.
We don't want to get caught surprised.
Right. No, we don't want to do that to you, so that's, okay, thank you.
Thank you. So again, just to finish going over this agenda, we're going to talk about priorities and goals, we're going to talk about performance measurements, we're also going to talk about engagement tools. This is that, that community engagement campaign that we've all heard about and are expecting to come up, and I think that's going to be very relevant to, to this discussion, and getting not just our input, but inviting input from the community. And then the final thing on this, this is a presentation on human service programs. This goes to homelessness and how we're using federal dollars. Do we want to set goals in that area as well?
Yeah, and it's specific, yeah, you asked for this last week, for specifics to have that discussion. So it's a little, it's different than the rest, but I think you want a time to give that feedback to, to the staff quickly as we're going through that process.
Right. Because as we saw today, there's deadlines coming up with regard to awarding of monies, and we need to alert people that are competing for these projects as to what our priorities are, so that they know what to bid on and how to respond. I'm looking forward to this. I think it's going to be, hopefully, a very productive day, and, but now, the question is what ask, can I come armed with specific projects? And the answer is yes. But I think we're going to try to initially keep the, the discussion at a high level to establish major goals, but that doesn't mean that we can't say, you know, for example, I'd like to accomplish this. There's nothing inappropriate about that. We might not get into a detailed discussion of that, but it might be a great example of why something's important, or what, what our priorities are. Okay. All right. Council, any other questions on that item? If not, the next item on our agenda for this meeting is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Mr. Luna.
Real quick, I had a real busy weekend. I want to thank everyone from the Multi-Generation Center for a great Harker Health event, and